This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the joint meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee and Town Council Meeting, Monday, March first, 2021. It's now six P. M. Chairman's announcement showing to Governor Baker's March twelve, twenty twenty order spending, uh, spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty, Alpha and subsection eighteen, and the governor's March fifteen, twenty twenty order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Plan Development Subcommittee is being conducted as remote participation, no in-person. Attendance of of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching by the remote information. noted that note below on this agenda. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at W W dot C I dot Southbridge dot M A dot U S. As soon as we are able, roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. Um, agenda item number one is roll call. Counsel Dow.
Here.
Counsel Lazo.
Present.
Counsel Adams, present. Dee Dee.
Present.
Catherine.
Here.
We have a quorum. We also have. There we go. There's all have Counsel Daniel, Counsel Marquetti, Counsel Joe Van, uh, Mr. Rumsey, and the town manager present at this time. All right. Uh, agenda number two, considering except playing development meeting minutes of February seventeenth, twenty twenty. Need a first or a second, please?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
Okay. If I can grab a second from somebody.
Second.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any amendments to, uh, the meeting minutes for that evening?
No.
Uh, Dee Dee, do you have any?
None. Thank you. No.
Catherine, any?
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Lazo.
Wasn't present.
Hey, Counsel Dow.
Just. Oh, thank you. I was present.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if anybody saw here. So the only thing that was identified to me actually by Ms. Dean was on agenda item number three, the first sentence says, Ms. Dean notes, the town applied for both grants, and I put in brackets L L R P. It should be L R R P. And on the second, second page, uh, agenda number five, second line over, it says, in application was approved, except, of course, it should be spelled E X C E P T instead of the way it is now. Um, again, Miss Dean found that, so. Any other?
No.
All right. All those in favor, Dee Dee?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo.
I'm staying.
Counsel Dow.
Upstate.
Uh, Catherine.
Yes.
You'll abstain. You weren't at the last meeting, so you have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
No, no, that's okay. That's all right. Um, you'll so you abstain. Counsel Adams is a yes. All right. As amended, I should say. Uh, but then I number three, discuss review pursuing mass E V I P, which we need to spell out, grant for another public charging station, and at what location, and entertain a motion to vote to recommend the council pursue applying for this grant. I I'm not going to ask for a motion at this time. I guess we can just discuss it. So let me give you a little bit of history, if you don't mind, uh, before we make any type of motion. Um, originally, it, uh, this, this particular agenda item was scheduled for the fourteenth of January, which was canceled. Um, I believe there was another town council meeting that had to take place or something, and, uh, we couldn't hold it there. Uh, we held it again on, we postponed it, moved it over to the twenty first of January. We had discussed it. Uh, we, we made a motion to postpone it because we only had a half hour meeting that evening, I believe it was, and, uh, we moved that and postponed it to February second, where on February second, we voted in favor of three zero zero, uh, for the emotion that took place, which lo- located, uh, for for charging stations, one at the municipality parking lot over on Elm Street behind the fire department, one on Main Street, right in front of, uh, the library, one at the town hall to replace the older ones, so we can split those up between the town hall and D P W, and last one is over by the gazebo of, uh, on Crystal Street. Then on February second, I'm sorry, then on February eighth, it was a gen item number sixteen to say, and it was voted, uh, to, there's much discussion, and everybody has those minutes, uh, to send back to the P and D, and that vote was a six to two to one vote. We did have some time to discuss it further if we needed to. So we're kind of going on our fourth meeting on this. So, um, at this point in time, I'm just gonna kind of leave this up on, because I'm still, uh, I'm still recommend the four locations at this point in time, but I have no problem at all discussing this. So I will leave this to whoever would like to talk first. Yeah, Dee Dee.
Just exactly what is the town council looking for? We gave them the four locations. We discussed it. I I don't know what further we can discuss at this point.
I think there was a bunch in, uh, Counsel Lazo, I'll let you.
All right, go ahead. You can. Your chair, go ahead, you can.
It was, you know what? It was just really, there was multiple locations that some, some counselors felt that it should be behind the library, one should be behind the library. Some counselors weren't in favor of being at the town hall at all. Some counselors, yeah, different views of it. Um, there was other discussions on the the vendor itself. Are we going to utilize a vendor for this? Uh, which I think everybody was in favor, most people were in favor for, favor of. So, uh, Counsel Lazo, please.
Yeah, um, Dee Dee, one of the things that was discussed was, we have actually four electric cars. I don't think anybody was against the, uh, the concept of electric cars as much as when the town hall parking on the side of the building, they have the charger like right where the citizens go in, and the discussion was more of citizen friendly by letting catering to the majority of the people that need to park and go into the town hall, do business and leave. Instead of letting, in other words, we have handicap parking, we have to make spaces for them. And I think the electric one probably should have went around the corner in the back, so the citizens had a more convenient area to, um, to park to do business with the town hall. Secondly, the one on Main Street, um, I, some other counselors spoke about it, but other locations were brought up, like Central Street Parking Lot, where the registry of motor vehicles is, where we, we own the parking lot. Um, I, I want to apologize because I should have been at the meeting and I was taking my online license or my construction supervisor's license when this discussion happened. I don't know who made the decision of putting it where it is at town hall, but I know I'm an advocate of moving that where we cater to the majority and not the four cars, but I also think it's important to have the charging stations for the electric cars. But that's, it kind of, it kind of evolved in the main street parking is to be left open in front of the library because of the location of the banks, the library, and the post office as far as driving in and leaving. If there's a charging station, I'm under the impression you're not allowed to park there. I could be wrong, but, uh, that was basically the overall discussion.
Okay.
I, I kind of agree. I agree with what was discussed on that one. Yeah, go ahead, Dee Dee.
My question is now, Scott, when we had our meeting, we discussed electric wise, as far as having to power the station. Does the parking lot down by the registry, would they have access to be able to set this up? Is, do we know?
Well, it's a town owned building, whether you put it in front of the library. I mean, to my knowledge, yes. Uh, we have a town owned building with power added with lighting in the parking lot.
Because I know that they have access.
We own the whole parking lot.
No, no, and I, okay, Dee Dee, I know, I know what, yeah, go ahead. Um, I will say this. I just want to put on here that, uh, Ms. Dean is on here as well. So I I will say this is one of the big thing where where these four locations, the reason behind these four locations, and that was, they got with, uh, uh, Ms. Bl- Mrs. Blakely or Ms. Blakely of D P W, was that there was a local power source to be able to tie right on in there instead of having to dig up, like Central Street Parking Lot, there was, you have the five year moratorium, don't dig up any of that old cement or that new cement and all that kind of stuff, which makes a lot of sense. But I think it had a lot to do with what, where was a close power source located? Hey, we know the town hall has already got it hooked up in there. We know the gazebo has that right over, uh, by the gazebo has it right there. The Main Street, I believe, has it there because I believe Ms. and Eric can tell me if I'm wrong. Um, that's already, uh, been looked at, and then the, uh, municipality parking lot as well. So, and we have to provide the location. I just want to reiterate, though, this is for applying for this grant. Um, and, 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 yeah, so it's applying for the grant. So I'll let the, go ahead, Counsel Lazo.
Just a point of clarification. I'm not suggesting Central Street Parking Lot. I'm suggesting the other parking lot down by the registry of motor vehicles. Because it, you know, with the parking lot being used in the registry, would be a simple run of an electrical line by the caboose. And, uh, whether you put it where the handicap parking is, go one more over. That, not the Central Street Park. Thank you.
Right, correct. Absolutely. Uh, Catherine, you, I think you raised your hand.
No, no, I didn't raise my hand.
Uh, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, I'm in favor of this, putting electric car charging stations around town. Where you put them, it doesn't really matter to me. I mean, it's not a, it's not a vote killer for me. I'll still support it wherever we go with them. I just think that the Main Street location, I don't understand that location because these, if you park your car, electric car somewhere, are you going to have it sitting there for quite a while for it to charge? I mean, that's, that's the point of having these electric car charging stations. And, uh, so I wouldn't want to tie up a parking place downtown for an electric car charging station. So I suggested maybe we could put it in a library parking lot. Apparently, the librarian doesn't want to put it there. So maybe we could put two down by the gazebo, or I don't know. But like I said, if that's, if we end up putting it on Main Street, I'll still support it. I just thought that was kind of an odd place for it.
Um, I will say, I, oh, thank, thank you, Counsel Marquetti. I don't have a problem with it being in front of the library. I really don't. I think it offers something to to people maybe coming into town saying, hey, we have something. It showcases our Main Street. And that, I guess, is, in my view, and I'm not fine on everything here. I just, in my view, I'm just thinking of planning for the future of the town. Even if like, you know, Counsel Lazo brought up, you know, we have four in town, but, you know, we, we may have a thousand in the state, and, and if they come to our town to go shopping or eat or something like that, or even go to the library because it's pillar of our community, uh, why not put it out there? The gazebo, I think, is a great location. I think, and I won't speak for Counsel Joe Van, we talked, he brought up, uh, the Memorial Park, I think it was, rest of Memorial Park. I mean, that wouldn't be a bad location either. So I think there's a power source right down the, the area, but I will say, is there some work possibly being done in a few years? So I'd be very careful of that. But, uh, I just want to hear what everybody has. If there's other locations that we could think of, I mean, I don't want to do an overkill with twenty applications, I think, that would put, uh, Mr. Rumsey in complete overtime and over, uh, spill, but, you know, maybe four or five throughout the town? Why not? Anyways, I'll just keep letting, does anybody have any questions or or comments they want to make on this? Uh, Counsel Joe Van first, since I kind of threw your name out there.
No, that's all right. I'm going to defer to the vice chairman because we never really hear from him much, so I'll defer to Counsel Daniel first.
Yes, sir. Then, um, the, since we don't hear from him very much, Counsel Daniels, go ahead. It's all yours.
Uh, my, my only concern about the Main Street, uh, uh, spot is how does, how does the reconstruction of Main Street affect this? If, if, if we're talking about putting this in, um, and it won't happen until sometime in the summer or later, are we going to be in the street with this, or is this going to come over the sidewalk from the library? Um, you know, where, where are we getting the power for this? And we, and if we can't dig up the Central Street Parking Lot, which I agree with, uh, we shouldn't be digging up Main Street either.
Okay, that's a valid point, actually very valid point. I don't know if, uh, Mr. Rumsey has any, or the town manager would like to chime in on that area.
Uh, sure, I can. Um, with regards to the library and and Main Street, we would be putting it on a, uh, unit, the charging unit itself would be on a bollard, um, which would be on the edge of the road. It should not be affected by the Main Street construction. Um, so it'll be between the sidewalk and the, um, the road itself.
So I'm just getting it's clear that this would not affect that, the new construction.
Correct, because we're going to put it, um, towards the eastern, uh, property line, because of, of the road construction that essentially goes up to the, uh, existing crosswalk, the way we east of the crosswalk.
Right, okay. Counsel Daniel.
Well, then my concern is what's, what's your anticipated power source? Where is your anticipated power source?
Uh, we're anticipating to utilize the library for the power source at this time.
Okay. Anybody? Oh, Counsel Joe Van.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, yeah, I'm not opposed to this grant application at all, as other counselors have stated. I get, and again, I, I missed the meeting as well, and I apologize, but I I just think, um, Counsel Lazo's point that one at the town hall, we have limited parking as it is. Um, we take up two spaces now. We had given, uh, the prior administration direction to move that town vehicle out of the way, and it never happened. Um, oh, I I'd like to see that one either moved or maybe D W if we're going to power the town vehicles or or move it to the back of the building. I agree with that. I think this, personally, I I think the R M V, if we're going to have, we want people to come into town, that downtown corridor. The R M V, hopefully, we will get that back into a regular operating mode. Um, this would give people an opportunity if they come into town to be able to part in that. Not only that, we have the, uh, host agreement with the marijuana facility, so I think that parking lot would be ideal for a station to be put in. Uh, one, in front of the library, I, I'm, I'm perplexed why we can't put it behind the library. I I really am. It's one spot. Um, and destination for people to come to town, uh, maybe to utilize the library uh, and use and keep the Main Street corridor open for parking for banks, post office, whatever happens with the stuff with credit union building uh, down the road, uh, you know, like we say, um, so I I fully support four locations. I have no problem with two of them. Um, the Main Street one, I'd really like to see it behind the library to keep those parking spots open, and also, um, consider the R M V parking lot, uh, because it is town owned and given the work that's being done in that area. So that's my intent for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Dean, I, I know Counsel Dow, you, you had your hand raised, but I believe Ms. Dean may be answering some of that.
I just wanted to chime in quickly. Thank you for allowing me to answer. I did just call Heather and ask, is there anything she needs us to advocate for regarding the library spot? And she said she would ask that you not choose in front of the library. In her opinion, east of the crosswalk uh, is where the bus state, uh, bus pulls in, and so it might interfere. So she said, if nothing else, please consult with her on the design first before going forward with the Main Street.
Okay. So I I don't have a, thank you, Ms. Dean. Actually, Counsel Dow, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think, uh, my, uh, suggested the gazebo behind the library. I'm not sure why we're going to go by whatever saying with they want, they don't want it behind the library. That's not their decision. That's our decision to vote on it. I think this is the best spot for the town, behind the library, behind the fire department, and I agree with Counsel Lazo, the registry of motor vehicle parking lot. The town hall, it's moving behind that one behind the town, and I'm not sure why we cannot put one, if he doesn't want it there on the side where the parking, why wouldn't do it in front of the town hall on the street, on Elm Street?
You know? Let me, the, I'll try to ask Counsel Dow the most appropriate way on the first thing about the library. I think it's more of a recommendation than they telling us we cannot do it.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chair.
No, no, no worries. No worries. I just want to make sure.
We don't want it behind the library. I'm not sure, you know, they, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to see what the best for the town, not what some kind of, you know, who want it, who doesn't want it, you know? Thank you.
Right. No, no, I appreciate it. Thank you. Make a lot of sense. Uh, Counsel Lazo.
Yeah, um, first and foremost, as Counsel Marquetti said, and I agree, we are in favor of four charging stations. I think a little bit of common sense, when you, we look at our town, and, uh, if, I, I know that Peg has come up with some ideas with the Central Street Parking Lot and the Senate Corps, and when she gets on a roll with this stuff, I get excited because I see it as a destiny. So if people are going to come in and we become a destiny for whether it's the registry of motor vehicles, a business, a market, whatever it is, I thought that would be user friendly for the charging station and for those businesses. That's why I ruled out, in my mind, I think the one in front of the library is really a no-no. Um, when you take a parking lot like behind the fire station and you put a charging station in, you're going to charge a car and you're walking distance of doing things in the downtown core. If you own a registry of motor vehicles, naturally, as Counsel, um, Adams said, people are going to come from all over to use the registry. Not a bad location. And again, when it comes to power source, if there is a Southbridge building or structure or lighting, then the power source is there. So I think there's definitely, I mean, when you brought up the central, uh, the Main Street Park, there's a parking lot there, the gazebo, there's a lot of great ideas here. But I think, again, with the town hall, that one probably bothers me the most because of the use and, and, uh, creating a, a fluid movement with the town hall parking, because there's not much there. But I got to tell you, there's a lot of good locations, a lot of great ideas. My only question, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
This grant goes forward. Do we have to have the four locations decided?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I will leave it for further discussion. I'm ready to weigh in on what I think, but I'd like to hear some answers, I guess.
So, and before I go to Counsel Daniel real quick, oh, uh, Counsel Daniel, then to Catherine. So what I'm hearing right now, just tell me if I'm wrong, and this way Eric or this town manager can respond to it. I'm looking at, there's favor of the R M V parking lot on source from the R M V itself. Looking at, we're looking at behind the library, where you can pull the library source again, if that's the case. Crystal Street, which is right by the gazebo on, on the common, which nobody's talked about and said that they didn't want it there. And the municipality parking lot right behind the fire station on Elm and Main. Um, and pulling the source there. Am I, it, okay, we.
I think that's right, yeah.
I think we're okay with that. Okay. So I'd ask Mr. Rumsey or, uh, the town manager or anybody else if there's another, like, is there an issue with those four locations before I go to Counsel Daniel or Catherine?
Uh, no, not at all. Um, the only reason why we were considering Main Street versus behind the library was because the librarian, librarians requested uh, that we not put a charging station back there because they have limited parking and their parking lot is often full. So they did not want to see a space at this time, um, utilized solely for electric vehicle charging. So, um, you know, the nice thing about this program is that it's going to come around again. So at this point in time, um, you know, if you decide not to go with Main Street and not go with, uh, behind the library either, in the future, uh, maybe there's expanded parking at the library. We can look at putting one in at that time.
Um. How many parking spots is over behind the library?
Off the top of my head, I'd like to say maybe twenty or so.
Uh, is that all you have, Mr. Rosie?
Uh, no, um, you know, the, uh, R M V lot is, uh, I think that's a fantastic idea. I'm, I'm all for it. If, uh, you know, if that's where you all think we should put a charging station, absolutely, let's go for it. Um, as far as removing the station from the town hall, um, you know, we had already spoken in the past about moving the current, one of the current stations behind the town hall for the town vehicle, and the other, um, you know, to D P W, let's say, uh, for the purposes of, in the future, charging, uh, a vehicle for D P W. Um, you know, that, obviously, we don't have a vehicle at this time, so it does not necessarily even need to be installed. We can put it in storage if necessary. Um, as of right now, we own the unit. Um, and deciding to not put a unit back at town hall um, really doesn't hurt us, I don't think. Um, I would say the only thing that it does potentially do is um, it makes the town less future proof, the town hall parking less future proof. Um, however, Edwards Block Parking Lot is not that far away.
Okay.
Um, so maybe we might want to, you might want to say, put instead of one charging station, uh, which would be for two cars at the Edwards Block, maybe you do two charging stations for four, for four cars.
Okay.
Um, the, the budget, uh, that were allotted through the state, which is fifty thousand um, per property, uh, running some numbers with, uh, Massachusetts Company, who does, uh, sales and installation of um, of charging stations. Um, it looks like they, uh, they believe that fifty thousand would be able to get us all of those units, um, on per property, so we could actually do that.
Yeah, so it's up to fifty thousand dollars per unit, right?
It's fifty thousand dollars per property for the level two chargers. For the level, uh, for the D C fast chargers, it is up to fifty thou- it's, I'm sorry, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant. However, um, in speaking with this company, they told us that the out of pocket for the town would be between ten and twenty thousand dollars, and so, um, you know, I figured that was a long shot. So first of all, and second of all, he said, um, there are D C fast chargers in the area. Um, and we would likely not um, get that grant because the state is looking for deficiencies. They're only installing uh, potentially like twenty to thirty of these throughout the entirety of the state um, of these fast chargers. So they're looking for areas where they simply do not exist. And I believe there's several of them that were put in, in Sturbridge, um, on Route twenty or off of Route twenty. So we, we went back and kind of, what can we use, you know, what, what's going to be more readily utilized by the um, the people who are coming into town with electric vehicles? Um, and who are residents of town with electric vehicles, and it's the level two charger, which is not quite as fast, but it'll do a, a pretty decent job of charging most vehicles.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I guess, piggybacking on the, the other councils that have spoken. Um, I agree with the locations that you enumerated. Um, I think that they're appropriate. I think that at some point in time, it seems that we should, uh, ask the town manager to look into moving uh, the charging stations from where they are now at the town hall to other places. Uh, but that's something that can be done in the future. That doesn't have to be done tomorrow. Uh, but we should probably look into that so that we, uh, open up those spaces for the public, because it does get crowded there. Um, on a, on a different note, um, on page two of the background material that we were given, um, it talks about costs not covered. Um, so we've got a pretty good sense as to what's covered. Um, what, what are anticipated expenses that we might have to deal with that are not covered in terms of the installation and, uh, uh, working up these spaces? Because I'm, you know, I would be concerned that it would be, you know, potentially cost prohibitive if it's, you know, four stations and it's a, you know, a lot of digging that we need to do to get electricity to where. you know, a lot of digging that we need to do to get electricity to where the spots are and that sort of thing.
That's a good point, uh, Mr. Rumsey. I think I can answer some of that, but I'd rather the experts do that. If I sound more intelligent than me.
Certainly. So the costs for um, installation are covered under the grant. Um, and for a starting number for a unit, um, which is a, we're proposing to utilize dual-head units, so it's one unit for two parking spaces. Um, the unit would um, be covered under the grant. The payment system would be covered under the grant. The installation would be covered under grant, under the grant. Um, for example, for the uh, Edwards Block Parking Lot and um, the gazebo area, we're looking at Ballard Mount, those would not be covered. Um, I've priced allards in the past, they run about two hundred dollars a piece. Um, so yes, there's minimal costs to the town for what is not covered under this grant. Um, but the overall, you know, amounts are, you know, the vast majority is, is covered.
I, I just throw it in here. I know uh, uh, the town manager has some experience behind this as well, and we've had a lot of discussion on this and included with Mr. Rumsey and Ms. Dean was, you know, one of the areas while the grant application was being uh, sent up, that we would look at the vendor sources, possible vendor sources down the road to be able to uh, to pay for the um, obviously the electricity use and the uh, maintenance on them and all that kind of stuff down the road, that'd be paid by the user. Uh, that'd be part of the software program that would be included in there, and they would pay for that. I believe um, Mr. McCall had even mentioned at one point, you can add a charge to it if there it's a two-hour charging limit and then they go four hours, there could be a charge per hour after the, the, the end of the, the initial charge. So, and I could be wrong, and I don't wanna speak on your behalf, but just wanted to put that out there as well. So, if, you know, one other thing I wanna know before I go to Catherine or, or the town manager was that uh, you know, a lot of these people could find these charging stations right on their phones. So it'll be, we can actually have that set up where they, they can find those uh, or utilize an application to find those locations. Uh, Catherine?
Yeah, I, I agree with uh, three of the spots, but if, if the library is um, you know, not the ideal place, is, has anyone considered Everett Street on the side of the post office area? Since that's so close to Main Street?
Oh, nobody's thought about that. Go ahead, Council Lazo.
I, I don't think it's a bad idea. The only question is, where's the power source? Does the town have to own the property for the power source?
Yeah, go ahead. If anybody can answer that one. Uh, Council Marquetti? I guess you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I, I think your, your three suggestions are the best ones. So I've been to the library in the summertime, and I think there's plenty of parking back there, so I don't know what the issue is. Um, and I would think that if it's full, then people will find, you know, be able to park. I parked in the street before. I've parked in the bank at night when something's going on there, so I don't, I don't see a problem with behind the library. I like Elm Street, RMV, behind the library and the gazebo. Um, and your suggestion to move one of the chargers from the Town Hall into the back is a good suggestion, then leave the other one there, so at least there's one there. I would've moved it to the uh, to the uh, I wouldn't move it to the uh, DPW, not yet anyway. I don't see that they need it over there, but anyway, I like the idea. I think that if it costs us money to install, so be it, because we have to get uh, you know, the price of climate change, what, what is the price of climate change? We might as well start doing something now, and this would encourage people to buy electric cars, which I think is a good idea. General Motors is gonna start building electric cars. So we really wanna do everything we can to get on the right side of history here, so I, I think we should go with your suggestion. I'm all for it. And uh, let's, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, apologize to Catherine real quick. Did you have anything else you wanted to say? I just didn't mean to cut you off like that.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay. No, I don't have anything further.
Okay, uh, Counselor Steves?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first off, sorry I showed up at six-thirty. I wrote it in my notes that it was starting at six-thirty, not six. Um, so you may have already addressed this question. Um, but I noticed reading through the documentation, one thing that kind of jumped out at me is that if we're putting these all in four separate locations, it looks like if I'm reading it correctly, that we have to make them all handicap accessible. Can we afford to do that?
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes, so we would have to, in effect, yes, we are making them handicap accessible. Um, however, the specs that they should, that they um, have for handicap accessibility is nowhere near uh, the requirements for an actual ADA handicap space. Um, so the long and short of it is, yes, we do have to make them handicap accessible. Um, so we are potentially, like at the library, let's say we put a single unit there, we're looking at maybe taking up two spaces for one unit. Um, you know, Crystal Street, the Edwards Block and the RMV Lot, I don't think we have any issues there. Um, you know, there's a lot of spaces that can be utilized for this purpose. Um, so for example, if you did it, if you did two units at the Edwards Block, we're potentially looking at three parking stations.
Okay. And if we're, I guess, I can take, I take it we've decided not to put one on the, on the street itself, because I think that would be the biggest threat. It's having an access from like a sidewalk to a handicap space on the street. I wouldn't wanna see somebody rolling their side, their handicapped, their, yeah, their wheelchair down the street to get to their electric vehicle. That would be kind of dangerous. That's kind of what jumped into my mind, so.
Yeah, I think Main Street is basically off the table at this point, I think.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Counselor Lazo?
Okay, so just listening to what everybody's saying, if the registry parking lot, the Edwards Block Parking Lot, the gazebo, and we move the Town Hall one to the back, um, I know nobody has brought up the schools, and I know the middle high school has a big auditorium and I don't know if you would utilize a McMahon Field or the old high school. There were a lot of parking areas. I mean, I keep focusing, I'm on kind of the downtown area for the uh, walking, you could charge a car and walk. But uh, I know that there are other parking spaces around at the schools that are larger parking lots. Um, I, I am definitely not in favor of putting them on the street. Uh, that, that's, to me, I think, you know, it's more convenient and handicap accessible when you get into a, into a parking lot area.
And I, and I, I will, and uh, Counselor Dow, I just saw you. I, maybe Eric and, or Mr. Rumsey can answer this. If I'm not mistaken, these type of grants come around annually?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, so maybe in the future years, we can have a little bit more time and we can figure out exactly um, other locations, uh, especially with the kids driving too as well. You never know what they're gonna get out of that, so I, I, I have no, and I actually don't have a problem on the Main Street, uh, one or two down the road, because I think it's just gonna attract people to the downtown area, especially if we have, are able to open up some restaurants as well, so just wanted to make that note. Uh, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to you. I agree with Council Marquetti, gazebo, behind the library, behind the fire department, registry of motor vehicle, and move one charger on Town Hall behind the Town Hall. Thank you.
You want me to read off a motion, since it sounds like there's a, unless somebody else has an idea? Uh, Mr. Town Manager, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The only comment I would add on all of this about the locations is, you know, my experience dealing with a lot of these, um, people don't just show up to go in necessarily and drop off a piece of paper at your Town Hall and say, oh, there's a charging station, I'll pull over and charge. Um, as was pointed out by, I think, Council Marquetti and others, it takes a while to charge these vehicles, on average, about two hours. So anybody who's coming in to the town and looking to charge it is probably looking to leave it for a period of time. And more often than not, if uh, we go with a system that is on a national network, they'll find that, as you said, on the phone. So it's a destination. They'll look for that spot. So if we don't have it right on the Main Street, if we have it off-street, they'll find that, they'll, and then they've gotta kill two hours. So that gives them the opportunity to go to a restaurant or a bank or something else. Um, so I, I, I would be inclined to agree with a lot of the, the people have spoken that, you know, saving on-street parking for people that are just pulling up to do uh, quick trips is probably better use of those spaces where if we could find some uh, what I would say off-street, but more like behind the fire station or the central parking area um, to put some of these, that may be better suited where somebody's gonna leave their car for two hours to get the charge. The only other time people would be leaving their car is overnight, and you will get that. You will get people that will come to your public facilities at night and leave them uh, overnight to charge, and that's where we wound up using those uh, parking fees to dissuade people that would forget to come get them at eight o'clock. We wouldn't want them to tie up spaces. But that's just some additional background information, I thought you might.
Well, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Town Manager. Uh, Counselor Lazo, did you have your hand raised again?
I was gonna make a motion on the four sites that have been uh, recommended, Mr. Chairman, if you're.
Would you like me to read one?
Counselor Adams, can I interject real quick? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Rumsey, I'm sorry.
Uh, Counselor Lazo, um, in regards to the Town Hall, um, the current charging stations we have are, we are unable to um, charge anything for people to utilize those spaces. So I believe Councilor Marquetti said he would like to see one removed for the back of the building for the town vehicle, leaving one for the public. Um, however, can I make a suggestion if that's what you would like to do, that you, that we put the grant into replace that with a new unit so that it would be a charge for you um, to charge your vehicle rather than a, a, a free, or what they call a dumb charger, which is what we have now?
So are you recommending to move it from the side of the Town Hall to the back?
I was recommending taking one of them, yes, from the side of the building to the back for the purposes of charging the town vehicle, so it would not take up a space there on the side of the building.
This isn't part of, it's not part of the discussion.
You're gonna take one. Are there two there?
Yes, there are two there.
What I'm saying is to remove charging stations on that side completely. I mean, you have people going in the Town Hall, you know, whether they be the inspections, the taxpayer, uh, you know, and it's just, that's where everybody parks. I'm talking about removing both of them. I didn't know there was two there, to be honest with you. I thought there was just one station. And uh, that's why I didn't wanna cut the baby in half. I wanna move the baby completely.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Lazo. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I make a motion to uh, uh, agree on the gazebo, library, behind the library, behind the fire station, and the registry of motor vehicle parking lot? And we'll leave the two at the Town Hall for further discussion. I don't think we need to discuss that for the grant to move on.
No, I, I, I actually don't think so either. I think it just needs to do the application process. We could talk about the vendors um, as, as we move forward through the application process as well. I mean, I think that's something that they'd be researching anyways during that period of time before, hopefully, we get those four locations and accept that grant. Then we have a whole, another thing to accept the grant, and then how are we gonna go ahead and get this paid for um, on a daily, on a daily basis? Yes, sir.
So there's no, there's, the grant has nothing to do with the town charges being moved? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, has nothing to do with them at all. But I think it was brought up earlier, just Counselor Lazo, that if we do do that and keep that one there, then let's get one, we could put a vendor on there and upgrade it, you know?
I second Mr. Dow's motion on the four locations for the grant.
Oh, I'll, I'll, how about for, okay, so how about for read this off, just to make sure it's right for the town council down the road? Recommend that council pursue applying for the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, MAS EVIP, grant for public charging stations to be located at the municipality parking lot behind the fire station in front, no, gotta take that out of there, the Town Common on Crystal Street, the RMV on La Rochelle Street, and the library, and I don't know the street, but it's where that, that parking lot's right there. Just gotta fill the location, behind the library.
Foster.
Foster, thank you. On Foster Street.
Off of Foster, not on Foster, off, yeah, the parking lot.
Okay, off Foster. I don't know exactly what they needed for the grant. That's, that's the motion. So I need a first and a second, is that okay?
Yep.
Yeah. All right, let's get a first and a second, and then uh, we'll, we'll discuss anything else.
You already had a first and a second. You just have to.
Let me read it most off. All right, I, okay. Counselor Lazo, I think it's Dow first that made the motion, Lazo second it. Any discussion on this at all, on the motion? Any further discussion? Very well. DeeDee?
Yes.
Uh, Catherine?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Adams, yes, five-zero favor of. All right, very well, thank you. But I do believe uh, that we'll be discussing the vendor in the near future and also um, what to do with the Town Hall Parking Lot situation. All right, then I have number four.
Counselor, could I just have a clar- clarification there?
Yes, sir.
When, when we're talking about the library, the library's address is Main Street, but we're talking about the parking lot behind the library, which is off of Foster, but I just wanna make sure we have that clear.
Very well, it is clear. I, I read that off behind the library and uh, off of Foster, yeah.
Oh, perfect. The library's address is actually Main Street, so that's why I just wanted a clarification of.
I'll get that motion and specific wording to uh, Counselor Jovan.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, yes, sir. Counselor Lazo, yes.
I was just gonna say, I, I agree with the Mike, uh, either way, it's gotta be a Main Street address on the uh, on the uh, application.
Okay. Well, it just says location, so. I don't know if it's specific on her address. Got it. Okay, I think we're set. Thank you. Um, then item number four, discuss review the proposed home rule legislation, additional liquor licenses and intent, entertain a motion to vote to recommend to council. Um, first and second on that one?
What's your move?
All right, second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, DeeDee. All right, let me go into my history, apologize there. So I just wanted, before I let the, the town manager go on.
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself. I'm a uh, person in town that uh, has a liquor license, so I think I would be in, I feel like I'd be in conflict and discussion. So I'm just gonna recuse myself. Thank you.
So I mean, I, I gotta do the same thing then. I don't know if you're, uh, my motion moves.
Yeah, you know what? We would have to remove your motion.
Do you need somebody to step in there, Dave?
No, we have the forum. We have a forum.
Even without the two of them? Oh, yeah, you with, well, yeah, you do, okay, okay.
So I'm just gonna ask if Catherine, would you like to make that second?
So I'll second.
Sorry, you have to, you know, DeeDee, you're the second. Catherine, you'd be the first. I'll put that as the paperwork.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to go over a little quick history on this. Um, September twelfth, two thousand nineteen, Liquor Board wrote the town council a letter in favor of uh, restaurant licenses, uh, to increase the restaurant licenses in the town. Um, they, they were, what, they're recommending that we get rid of the quota system, vote, uh, which we cannot do after further investigation. Uh, November nineteenth, two thousand nine, P and D held a meeting, and we have the minutes for that for uh, P and D meeting. And December tenth, two thousand nineteen, there was a note on, I believe it was uh, new business or something like that where just to follow up with the town manager at the time, he had no follow-up on that. September, October, let's see here, September and October, I believe the town, new, new town manager, uh, actually brought it up to myself one time, and I'm sure some other councils about uh, bringing in some new restaurant licenses. November fifth, twenty twenty, town manager sent a letter to the town council, uh, memorandum, support. And I do know between the both of us, we've talked to both Senator Batman and uh, Representative Durant, and both are in favor. Representative Durant, and both are in favor to support us, uh, support the town if, if we choose to do so. I will turn this over to the town manager if you'd like to speak on this behalf and, or, or somebody else, Ms. Dean. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Town Manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, one of the reasons that you folks brought me in and one of the things that I was hoping to do is help you with economic development. And you know, we're looking at a lot of long-term things for the town, such as the overlays and working on some of our infrastructure. I view what we're looking here tonight is um, maybe one of the easier, more immediate things that we can do to help with economic development. When I first got here, for example, people said, you know, if you want, we have um, one, two, maybe rest, sit-down restaurants that came to mind when most people said, you know, when you're staying at the hotels, here's, here's where you can go. But more often than not, people said to me, well, you can go to Sturbridge or you can go over to Charle and you can check out these other things. And I, I thought to myself, well, you know, we rely a lot on local receipts as many communities do. Um, where are all of our tax dollars going in terms of uh, meals, tax and things? Uh, it did come to my attention that there was an economic development plan. It was done back in 2016. And they did a retail assessment and they looked at Southbridge and they drew a, a radius three miles out, five miles out and 10 miles out. They did a survey of the people uh, in those different geographic locations and they determined that there was a distinct difference between what was going on within the three miles closest to serve, uh, Southbridge versus uh, five and the 10 miles out. That as you encompass South, uh, Sturbridge and the other communities, people didn't leave those communities to go for certain retail, especially restaurants. But when you looked at that three-mile radius right around the center of Southbridge, a lot of people did leave. And we're losing, according to that 2016 report, almost 50% of the sit-down dining dollars. And the, the assessment itself, the report, uh, when it comes down to it, it, it indicated that Southbridge could really benefit for an increase of sit-down restaurant establishments. And I'm happy to, to send that back around. I did come across it doing some research. That I think, you know, combined with the work we're doing with these overlay districts, we're doing the infrastructure, we're making our downtown more uh, appealing to people that want to invest. We're looking at the opportunity to have retail, residential in, in some of these same areas. Let's increase the opportunity for people to come in and open small restaurant and also have the ability to serve alcohol at those places because those tend to be some of the places people will come and spend their dollars. Not to take away from any of the establishments we already have. We have a lot of establishments here in town. I've tried many of them. Uh, but many of the liquor licenses that we have currently fall more along the lines what I'd consider of a, a tavern of sorts. Um, it's not what one might think of an upscale casual restaurant. Again, not to take away from them, but we have um, certain fraternal organizations. We have other things that identify themselves more as a traditional bar or restaurant. When I talked to the A B C C, they talked about classifying some of our um, liquor licenses here in town. That some would be more of that traditional function, but then open up some others to um, dining experiences. So we could have fast casual that might have a liquor license and we could have traditional sit-down. Um, and I think you'll find that there are people that would want to take that opportunity, especially as the economy is starting to pick up and people are gonna go back out. We might have existing restaurants in town that they want to take advantage of this and add that uh, to supplement the income they're already generating, especially those who've survived the pandemic, but also create a venue for new businesses to come in town. But either way, I think the town can benefit at the end of the day. Um, when people start seeing other businesses move into town, they consider moving into town and it can be a snowball effect. But I think having these additional licenses would be tools to help us entice people to come into town. And if they do and open those restaurants and be successful, we would generate local receipts from those out-of-town diners and that would help us to generate revenue going forward as well as stimulate the economic development that we would like.
My pitch, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McCall. Ms. Dean, did you have something?
I didn't necessarily, uh, thank you uh, for even asking. Um, Eric and I were more the technical assistants on just helping draft the home rule legislation. I feel like um, uh, the town managers' uh, points are all exactly the reason why we would want to pursue this and then I would just reinforce uh, or maybe Eric could reinforce that all, uh, all restaurants or all uh, zoning requires that a, an establishment be a restaurant. We no longer will allow for a bar only. And so that will sort of, you know, guarantee that any liquor license given out in the future does not go to a bar only.
And thank you to both of you for doing all that work as far as getting all this, the, the wor- the wording typed up as well and the, the documents. All right, uh, discussion, uh, Counselor Steves.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a quick, couple of questions. Um, one is, was there any particular reason why you chose to do 15 of these licenses? And why did you want to do the $5,000 extra fee?
So, you know what, I'm gonna, I'll take the hit on this whole part about the 15. I did speak to an individual, that's the town manager last. We, we started off with 10, then we went to 12, then we went to 15, said, why not? Ask for the world. Because when I talked to Ralph, who was the executive director of the A B C C, he says, aim high, expect low. And he said, because they, they can, they can go ahead and amend it on it. So we're like, you know, let's be careful. We want to get as many as we can, but I had a nice conversation today uh, with actually Representative Durant, because I had some questions on rule number 10 of the legislation. And uh, he said, look, you could always come back for more if you fill these. And he said, you, what we see on average is about seven. And to be honest with you, I, besides the seven references that were provided by the A B C C to us, we, they were averaging five, six requests per, per request. And sometimes they're a little different with wine and malt and all that kind of stuff. So, but that was the average. And I was gonna say that the 15, we should probably, I would recommend to the subcommittee, maybe knock that down to seven this evening instead of 15. Because then they're gonna, you know, you don't want more questions being raised when you don't really have to. So I'll take the hit on that number 15. So, and as far as the economic side, I would sit there and I, and Ms. Dean could probably answer this a lot better than I can, but I will say as part of uh, the redevelopment authority in the past, and I know Counselor Marquetti as well, they really needed a lot of um, help and love in the, in the future to help support the town and their, their abilities and their authorities. And this $5,000 per could help provide seed money instead of coming out of our operational budget um, or budgeting for the future. And that, I think that's where it came in. I will also say this. It's a lot of the same examples that, because this is really pretty boilerplate, uh, uh, based on some of these other towns. Uh, what I saw was there was $5,000 on average and they were going to economic development. So where we don't really pursue any other kind of development planning area, we need the redevelopment authority to be able to move forward. And it kind of piggybacks off of, you know, get, getting this um, individual and, and to consult the redevelopment authority and educate the staff as well. Hopefully I answered your question. Ms. Dean probably better than I.
But I just wanted to supplement the response. Uh, the other advantage to uh, the redevelopment authority is that they have the, those um, procurement exemptions. So, you know, if they're given money, they have, they can use a strategy when they're spending uh, that the town could not. And that's part of why we want the redevelopment. We, that's, you know, part of, we want to all learn their powers to see them take advantage of those.
Okay, that certainly makes sense. Um, how does this, this, how much is the current cost for a liquor license in town? I know a lot of it's getting passed from one owner to another, but how, when they actually start, when they actually come from the town, what do we charge?
Well, it's really, we don't have anything that really comes from the town per se, but the, as far as a permit fee, yes, it's a thousand dollars for that permit fee. And they, they pay that annually and this, actually this past year, um, it was introduced where we waived that thousand dollars.
Right, yeah, I remember that, okay.
But I think it was like $19,000 in total, uh, that we waived.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? Any, any more discussion on this? DeeDee?
Okay, my question is, people currently holding liquor licenses, when they sell their business, they're selling the license as well, correct?
But it is transferred, it has to be transferred over by the liquor license and ultimately, if I'm not mistaken, it'd be approved by the A B C C.
Okay, but now, when you're selling your business with a liquor license, isn't that making the business uh, somebody may want to buy it more because of the fact they've got that license already there? Are we gonna be taking away from the profit of the person who's selling their business? Did I explain that right?
No, no, I understand. It's an argument to have. It, that's something I think we discuss as well is how, how would we go about doing this and uh, yeah, it would probably take away in a sense from those individuals who paid $300,000 for a piece of property that had the license on it and they got it transferred over and, yeah, and where the town is now in control of um, seven licenses possibly. And being able to do it at uh, $6,000 total and then a thousand dollars permitting fee each year uh, where they could start off. But it, I, I just want to make a comment that I think based on the Excel spreadsheet that we see here, that we received today, where it's all based on population of the town. You know, in a lot of ways, we paint ourselves into a corner by looking at more of it. It was a tavern sense. Instead of full room restaurant. And now we don't have any license to provide unless you buy it for maybe the property value of that building. And getting all the transfer fees taken care of and all that kind of stuff, get approved.
I just want somehow, I, I just want to know how somehow we're gonna take care of the people who have them now, who have businesses and that's their way of selling their piece of property and making a profit. Uh, you know, I, I just don't know how we can fix that.
Uh, Mr. Town Manager?
I don't know if this will exactly answer, but they'll always have that license and if there's a demand, um, you know, more often than not, you see somebody comes in because they want to take over that existing location. And my guess would be for some of these existing locations, people would be taking it for the operation that it currently has. If, so if it's functioning as, let's say, a sports bar or a tavern, that's the type of business they would want. I doubt someone would take a highly successful uh, operation as, let's say, a sports bar and want to turn it into a uh, a small bistro or something like that. And I think if you did have that demand for people wanting to come in, you would have seen maybe someone entertain those type of offers to the existing license holders. And you may have seen that type of transfer. I haven't been here long enough to know whether we've had that level of inquiry. I do know, um, speaking with Mr. Ramsay from time to time, we do have people that come and ask, do we have additional licenses? Uh, a full alcohol because they are interested in coming in to open up some type of fast casual or sit-down dining. And we have to tell them at this point, no. They're always welcome to go talk to any of these existing license holders, whether they do or not, or whether there's been that opportunity, I don't know. But there's obviously some level of interest and if there's no movement on that side, our only other option is to go this avenue and get additional licenses. Um, and if it becomes a point in time where people start paying more attention, those licenses that are currently out there are gonna retain their value because people would want to utilize those either as a bar or to turn them into a restaurant. So I, I ultimately see it as there are no real losers here. I think we can only all gain from the experience that we, we bring in new businesses, we create value for those licenses and so nothing's lost on the other side. And I know we do have some people that are watching that are license holders and I don't, like you, I'm not looking to uh, devalue the licenses those other people have. And that's why we talked about maybe um, looking at how we classify, but I don't think we should preclude someone who's got a traditional bar operation. If they wanted to turn that into a sit-down restaurant, I don't think we should prohibit that. Um, and that would allow them to carry over their, their value.
Thank you, DeeDee. Is that all yet?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Lazo?
Yeah, I don't want to talk to the actual issue of the uh, going for these licenses, but the thing is, I think we need to step back and, and maybe get a little background in history. If you look at the licenses we have, you know, tavern licenses, when Florence Chandler made us all put in kitchens because we had common viculars license, which was a restaurant license. So what ended up happening a few years ago, we did this destination licenses and we went and got extra licenses for the town of Southbridge to expand the uh, the uh, economic development. Uh, but when you talk about selling a full license, that has more value than a destination license. Destination licenses that we were granted by the state and the A B C were never transferred. And most of them are gone and out of business. The, just for an example, when you say what's the value of a license, the one establishment purchased one for 80,000. Another establishment purchased it for 5,000. So when you ask the question, what is the value of the license? It's whatever you can get. And you're not supposed to sell the license. If I could say, Mr. Larry Shaw is correct, you are selling the business. And with that goes the asset of the license. But as far as classification, years ago, back in the eighties, we reclassified and got rid of seasonal licenses. We gave them all for option of full licenses. And they were all flipped from seasonal to full. And so we, as you say, categorized all license for common vics. They technically were all restaurant licenses. They have a higher value. A tavern license, as you say, is a barroom. Southbridge had, uh, oh God, I want to say somewhere upwards towards 45 licenses at one time in the eighties. And since then, it has dwindled down miserably. And uh, I, I do think that there was a quota that you only could have so many licenses based off your population. I don't know if that has changed. But again, when you're talking about licenses and value, uh, that's something that, again, uh, DeeDee, you asked a valid question. But the history is that we've always been a diner town and never been a restaurant town. And for whatever reason, we still have some good restaurants in town. But it seems that even the restaurants, like the Vienna, made a great run at it and just went out of business. It just, um, economically, when you look at Southbridge, we're trying to change Southbridge and economically generate an economic engine. And uh, without getting onto this agenda item, I just wanted to comment on the history. We're not gonna stop trying, but I hope that you're not disappointed in the final outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. Well, first of all, I don't think Counselor Lazo should be commenting at all on this. I mean, no disrespect, Counselor Lazo, but you did recuse yourself and that's how it should remain. I mean, no disrespect. Please don't take it that way. Second of all, um, right now, the problem is uh, that the bars can't open. That's the real problem right now. We need these bars open. Does anybody know what's going on with, when are the bars going to be allowed to, to be open? That's one thing I'd like to know because we really need to get on the governor to, to allow these bars to open. A second of all, whose decision was it that the money would go to the redevelopment authority? I'm not sure. I'm just not sure they have the expertise yet to even handle that money. I'd like to see them come up to speed first if they're going to decide what to do with the money. Uh, I don't know. I, like you said, Counselor Adams, I served on the redevelopment authority with you, but I don't think any of us were, had any uh, you know, experience on buying and selling and things like that, you know, so that's another thing that I'm, I'm kind of questioning whether we should turn that money directly over to them. I don't have a problem giving them some seed money. I think it should go through the council and not directly to them. It's just a thought. And now finally, I'm, I'm looking at your license and permit fee here. Uh, was updated in 2013. I think it needs to be. I think it needs to be updated because as far as I'm concerned, some of these fees are not very high. I mean, I think they need to go up, in my own opinion. Was, was that the last time it was that these were adjusted? I need, I think they need to be readjusted.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, what, what I'm, thank you, Council, what I'm gonna do is, is because the two counselors had recused themselves, I understand there was a history lesson that was being provided. I think at this point in time, and normally, if you look at the, they actually have to remove themselves from the meeting themselves because they did recuse themselves. So, that being said, I'm gonna leave it as that, I am going not to, uh, Council Dow and, and Council Lazo, I, I'm not gonna entertain you more a, anything, and I appreciate it, out of respect. But I, I don't want this, the evidence down the road.
I'm not gonna trust, uh, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, question of we remove our, ourself as a council or as a member of the board. We still, as a citizen, as a public reading, as a citizen, I think we have a right to speak.
No, and I think that's, we should be said enough on that one, no, you can't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, excuse me, we are the only ones that can recuse ourselves, not you, just understand that.
But you are, Council Lazo, you already did it. So I gave, I afforded you the opportunity to speak, but you already recused yourself, so that's it, thank you. Ms. Dean?
I just wanted to comment to Council Marcati's question about, um, who, uh, put the money towards the redevelopment authority, I, as the continued effort towards, uh, trying to. Improve the redevelopment authority, um, advocated for that, uh, it was, as Counselor Adams said, this was boilerplate language about the money going towards economic development. And again, with the strategy of hiring this consultant over the next three months, part of the scope of their work is to be able to teach how to accept seed money. Um, so that they do have funds to, as again, um, take advantage of their procurement exemptions, uh, and so, you know. I understand if the town doesn't support that, but I thought that, uh, it could dovetail with our, uh, overall agenda.
Oh, that's fair enough, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean, thank you, Council, um. As far as the fees that you had brought up, that is the liquor board, liquor board's responsibility to set those fees for. Any other discussion on this? I would recommend that, that we, we remove that 15 to seven. As a, as a subcommittee, instead of, you know, on the, where it says home rule legislation, under that whole paragraph, it has four sections to it, actually five sections. On the third line, I'd recommend moving, removing 15 and placing seven in there. Does anybody have any problems with that whatsoever, the subcommittee?
No.
DeeDee, Catherine?
No. No.
All right, any other discussion on this at all? I do, I do want to say that I did invite the liquor board to attend as well, so, to, to be able to give us history. On it. All right. So at this point in time, we do have the agenda, I'm sorry, we do have the motion, um, all those in favor, DeeDee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Council Adams, yes, three zero two. I'm sorry, it's three zero zero to say, accuse themselves. Welcome back, Council Dow. All right, attend item number five. New business. All right, anybody? All right. Motion to adjourn, item number six.
I make the motion to adjourn?
You? Council Dow, you second that?
Yes.
All those in favor, Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
DeeDee?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams, yes?
Yes.
Have a great night, everybody, great discussion, thank you so much.
Thank you.